All right. Call the meeting order at 4:01. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you. Roll call, please. Here.
Vice President Matthews.
Here.
Member Furlong.
Here.
Member Bramshire.
Here.
Member Galardi.
Here.
Council Representative Cole.
Here.
And staff and ex-officio members present today are Executive Director Frandl, Community Development Director Grams, Finance Director Winnick, and EDA Secretary Terny.
Thank you very much. I apologize, I'm using my work computer because I didn't have time to get home, so they're calling me on my laptop. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. So we have Mr. Furlong and Joe.
Matthews.
Matthews. That sounds good to me. It's nice to hear these names again. All those in favor say aye. Aye, thank you. Williams, that's right. All right. Approval of the minutes for that, so I need a vote on that, or... Okay. Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved.
So moved. Member Wong, representative, council member, this is so weird.
Second.
Second. Vice President Matthews.
Did he do that on purpose?
Did I say Wong?
Yes. I did too.
He was joking.
Boy, if everybody believes I'm joking, let's go with that. They won't realize how the mayor's out of it. Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think I'm going to oppose.
I can't believe I did that. She's not even here.
I know it.
Oh, all right. Open to the public, do we have anything as far as... I don't think so. So nobody online anymore, that's right. Okay. That's up to you now. Ryan, got that right?
All right. So we have EDA discussion items, talking about the downtown design, excuse me, talking about the downtown design manual, part of the CIP item and the budget aspect. Turn that over to Mr. Grams or EDA, or sorry, Dan Wayne, Finance Director.
Well, good afternoon. Yeah, we have an item here to talk about the downtown design manual. Currently, it is in the CIP to be funded through the general fund. Both that city council and myself, it really does fit more to be funded through the Economic Development Authority, but to do that really needs to get your approval for that. And then we'll kind of talk about, do we want to fund it for 2025 and do it in 2025 or postpone it for 2026? But before we get there, from our last discussion on the budget, there was considerable time that was spent as far as the allocation of time for the Community Development Director. When the position was established from a former city manager, the city council had approved that 50% of the community development's time was to come from the Economic Development Authority. I think we're all in agreement from our last conversation that that's just too high. And so we have changed that to be from 50% to 25%. And so that other 25% is coming from the general fund. And then it's been reduced in the budget that's in front of you right now, and that's what's being proposed to, that will be being proposed to be passed this year for taxes payable in 2025. So the question that comes here is that there was a CIP item that talked about updating the downtown design manual. And I'll just read kind of the description that was written, and it was written by the former Community Development Director. It was, "The downtown design manual was approved by city council in 2005. The downtown design manual was developed under the guidance and direction of the Design Historical Review Commission and was adopted by council in 2005. The manual illustrates portions of the zoning code as it relates to the desired built environment within the downtown. The zoning ordinance was updated in 2015. The 2040 Comprehensive Plan was approved in 2018. The redevelopment master plan was updated in 2022, and the downtown design manual is no longer consistent with the city plans and ordinances and should be updated." And it, so, the question is, first of all, is everybody in agreement that it should be being updated to reflect the current? And I'm seeing a nod. And so then the question really comes to, do we fund it in 2025 or in 2026? Part of the reason for that is that there's a great component in this design manual that is regarding the facade improvements, which is going to be the second item that we're going to discuss because we've been discussing about the potential of having either loans or grants for businesses regarding the facade. And so there's a little bit of a discussion item that needs to take place with that. If our Community Development Director's okay, I kind of want to turn that component over to him because he, him and I had some conversations, and he has some thoughts on whether 2025, 2026, and how it relates to that facade program that will be being discussed upcoming up next. So with that, I'll just kind of turn that portion over to Riley.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. So obviously, you know, I've been here three months now, still pretty new, still learning everything here. And Dan and I did have a conversation about kind of, you know, what item comes first, what makes most sense. I believe that we had talked about pushing this to 2026, or no, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry. Pushing this to 2026 would allow us some time to define the facade improvement project through the EDA and then allow us a little more time, again, like I said, to update the downtown design manual based off of that. So that's, that is kind of our just real quick recommendation for the EDA.
So that would give us all of 2025 to look at the annual updated, those type of things?
Correct.
There was a lot of discussion in regards to it. It was all you to look at that.
Yeah, before you would end up hiring a consultant to come in, so it'd be an opportunity for the EDA to discuss that. We kind of look at it as that it shouldn't, it doesn't necessarily mean to push out or delay the facade program. The facade program, when you're going through, that may give you some, shed light on how you want to, or how you want to incorporate that component within the design manual itself. So that may give, it's kind of like the chicken or the egg, which one would come first. But part of it is, because of Riley being new to the city, it gives an opportunity to kind of see and get a kind of a flavor for it as we're working through this facade program, see what type of requests are, kind of get the, you know, the consensus from the EDA on what's important, what's not, so we can, you know, update this, update the manual correctly, but it would be in 2026. What that does is that, you know, from a funding standpoint, that delays the decision whether it's going to be from the general fund or the EDA. We don't have to make that decision now, it would just be pushed out to 2026 for that decision. But it really comes to this group and this body of whether they want to move that design manual into 25 or into 26. And if it's in 25, is there a willingness from the EDA to incorporate that within its 2025 budget and pay for it, or is your recommendation to leave it into the general Clear as mud.
And your recommendation is to 26? Is that what you were...
That's kind, that's where the recommendation is, and then on top of it, the recommendation is, we started it last year, when this was written up, it was funded in, from the general fund. We had city council support. Last year, we actually had some other studies that were being funded from the general fund, and it's been the consensus from the, from the city council to move that funding out of the general fund because it's an up and down swing part to it, and it really should be, try to find a better place for it. And so the recommendation would be that it would be funded from the EDA in the, at the time that it's necessary. So if we, the recommendation would be, push it out to 26, we'll have that discussion at a later date, or, you know, put it into 25. Our recommendation is to put it to 26, we'll have the discussion later on. I think we need to learn more from the facade program and not hold that up any longer.
Seems like a long time, a year. Do we do that, half a year?
Well, you know, another, you know, option, you always have this, this option. We can incorporate it into the budget, and you can make that determination at a later date if the EDA decides to fund that. We can put it into the budget, it hasn't been approved yet, hasn't, so there's always that as an opportunity. Or you can always come back sometime next year when you've decided, yeah, we want to get going on the design manual, we would just make an amendment to the budget. It would be your recommendation, and then it would be approved by full council. At that point in time, it definitely would not be funded from the general fund because the general fund is heavily backed by levy, yeah. I do, I do agree, it does seem like a long time. I mean, we're sitting here in September of '24, and you're going to say we're not even going to start it till '26.
Is it funding just for the facade program, or is it for the study to do?
Got your mic on.
Is it funding for the facade program, or is it for the funding to, to do the, to do the work to put it together?
It's, it, the funding would be for updating of the whole downtown design manual, which the facade is a component of that.
And what is the cost of that?
It's been estimated at $60,000. There would be an RFP that would be put out there, and we would see what kind of responses that we would get. But that's what it was estimated at.
That is a while out, I mean, it could be reanalyzed, you know, halfway through the year, well after the study came back as well.
Say it again.
I said that, you could look at bumping that timeframe up too. I mean, if we, you know, got going on it, and, you know, you got it in the first, second quarter of next year, you had time to review and wanted to move on to the facade improvement program, then we could, you know, do that at that time instead of pushing it out to say that it's tied to 2026.
I know when we were in budget talks, talking about things, you were talking about different ways because of the levies going to be up there. Was that, was this part of that in that conversation?
Yes, it was. It was an option. So for everybody's awareness, since upcoming Tuesday, city council will be passing the maximum levy for the city. And when I'm talking total city, I'm including city, HRA, EDA. Right now, we're sitting at a 9.88% levy increase. So part of my job as the finance director is to come up with opportunities or other thoughts to try to reduce that levy. We have a number of unknowns. We are in union negotiations with all of our unions, so it'll be the beginning, 25 will be at the beginning of, which historically has been three-year contracts. We don't know where they're at. There's some other unknowns as far as, we're still waiting on facility assessment because I think our facilities, what we have in our current capital improvement plan are very much understated, and so we need to get the real numbers of what that's going to take. And then also, the Parks Commission is working on a, and they've done a number of different park plans that are out currently right now with HGA, that's looking at three of the parks. Those were, the parks and facilities were two of the three areas of infrastructure that have been identified that's going to have funding needs, the other one being streets, which the city council has already started funding with a direct levy component for that. So city council is looking at the opportunity of maybe increasing a levy component for parks and facilities. That's another one of those unknowns for those two. So there's three unknowns. The union contracts, is there additional funding needing for parks, or is there additional funding for facilities? So I put together a number of options for the city council to consider in reducing those levies. We've, city council's decided to kind of defer that right now, certify the maximum levy, knowing that the final levy isn't approved until, as EDA member Furlong knows, that isn't until later part of, or middle of December. So they have time to get those unknowns figured out and then reduce the levy. One of the options here was, because it's currently being funded in the general fund, is to reduce that $60,000 and move it over to the EDA. And so my first question, I'll start, is, is there an appetite to do that from the EDA? To fund the design, update of the design, downtown design manual? I'm seeing, I'm seeing one member in agreement. Any other thoughts?
I support funding it from the EDA.
Okay. Any others' thoughts?
To me, this is kind of an EDA-driven thing, so...
And that's, that's really kind of the way that we've looked at it, and it really should have all along been identified from a funding source from the EDA instead of the general fund. That's the reason for that, that switch. So do I hear consensus that there's an appetite to move that in? And if there is, then I'll give you what I, my next recommendation based upon that.
I think it should be under, under the EDA.
Okay. So then what I would do is, to give that freedom of moving quicker and with the possibility of moving forth with that in 2025, I would change the budget. Again, the budget hasn't been approved, so when you're looking at that right now, you've got your revenues and expenditures both matching. We can't change the property tax, or what is looked in there is the revenues, the ad valorem taxes of the $200,000, that's what we're proposing to set for the levy. But what we can do is, we can change the capital and put $60,000 in there for the capital, so it's, it'll be approved, or at least it'll be proposed and approved if everything goes forth in December, that you would have the funding coming in January 1st of 2025 for that $60,000. So then it opens up the opportunities that if you want to start in 2025, the funding's already there, you don't need to go back, we don't need to go back to the EDA, we don't need to go back for the city council for any approval. If you decide to postpone it at that point in time, no problem with it, it's just not spent in 2025.
I like having it under the EDA category because it's part of it, so we can keep your books neater.
Yeah. And so I'll incorporate that $60,000 into here, so it changes the budget component to it. Okay? Everybody in a kind of an agreement on that? And then, oh, I think, just kind of wanted to share with you, and again, this material was as of, I think, the end of August, but just to kind of let you know where the EDA itself is, that, you know, you had cash of $518,000, there's fund balance of $528,000. So from a financial standpoint, you're, you know, sitting pretty good. Part of that information will be beneficial when we go into item number two, when we talk about the facade improvement program. Any other questions, any other comments on item A, downtown design manual?
So moving forward, 2025 would be the, kind of the start date for it?
Yep.
We could go on sometime in 2025, we can start the program as...
Yep. Now we're not worried about the funding, the part of it, we're already set, so we can go forward when we're ready to go.
Yep, yep, and it'll be incorporated in the budget. Yep, correct.
Thank you. That sounds good.
Want to move on to the facade improvement program, please, Dan?
Facade improvement program. I think when we had talked about this, we were at the point where very much interested in moving it forward. And so I had mentioned that there was a couple of cities that have had facade improvement programs, city of Oakdale, but they've discontinued theirs. There's the city of Northfield, they still have theirs. And so plagiarism is a key to, key to my life when it comes to writing things, and so I was fortunate enough to have made connection with the Community Development Director at Northfield. And so kind of wrote, what you're seeing here is basically quite a bit of it's...
We're all kind of trying to figure out here.
115, I think it's 115 of 125, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Is everybody finding that?
115.
115. So it, the city of North St. Paul Economic Development Authority facade improvement program. And so this kind of describes the program, the purpose, who can apply for a matching grant, how much are the matching grants, and when are the grants available, what will the matching grant dollars pay for, what will the matching grants dollars not pay for, what are the eligible properties, and then kind of gives information of how do I receive a grant, and kind of walks through all of that. There's a lot of decisions here. Again, this is just a draft. This is really up to you to decide how you want to do this. I think the program, the purpose is, you know, if you want to read through that, I think it describes what you've been talking about. I can quickly go through it. The city of North St. Paul recognizes the important role that a vibrant downtown plays in the city's vitality. Strategic planning efforts of the Economic Development Authority identify downtown revitalization as an important objective. A well-maintained and attractive public realm reflects community pride and contributions to urban vitality. Building facades are critical elements of the public realm and in a downtown district. The need for ongoing maintenance is crucial to preserving a character and experience known to visitors of downtown North St. Paul. The facade improvement grant program aims to strengthen, revitalize, and sustain the downtown by encouraging and assisting property owners to make improvements to buildings within the downtown area. By providing a financial incentive, the program will stimulate private investment and support stabilized and increased property values. The EDA is funding this program over the course of three years. Each year, the EDA will review the program outcomes and make adjustments as necessary. That's kind of the overarching kind of purpose for it. Who can apply for the matching grant? Right now, and this is up for discussion, it's, the program would extend to all commercial properties along 7th Street and Market Street to Highway 36 to 6th Street, except for the postal office. That would be the program area. Building owners and commercial tenants with property owner's approval of commercial properties within the project area can apply for a facade improvement grant. For-profit and not-for-profit entities are eligible to apply as long as the grant is used for a commercial building. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And then how much are the grant, matching grants? Grants will pay for 50% of the total project costs, up to a maximum grant amount of $20,000 per property. And again, that's just a number that kind of threw out there. Grant funds must be matched one for one with private dollars. Owners of multiple properties can apply for separate grants for each property as long as the cumulative grant amounts awarded does not exceed the maximum grant amount. The minimum, in other words, that total 20,000. The minimum grant amount is 5,000 or 10,000 for a total project cost, and the total facade program grant amount is limited to $200,000. So putting an overall limit on it right now, again, that's something that can be changed as we review the program, the interest, and so forth.
Yep.
Sounding so good so far?
That's what we discussed the last time, yep.
So let's keep on going then.
Yeah.
Round and roll, or maybe we stop right now.
Yeah.
When are the grants available? Applications will be accepted at any time throughout the year. So again, if you're looking to move forward with this, I would adjust your budget to put $200,000 in there. Again, it's, you know, it basically is being funded through your fund balance, and that's why I kind of told, you know, kind of shared with you that you're at $528,000, you know, right now, currently. What will the matching grant dollars pay for? Facade improvement grants can pay for a variety of exterior building facade improvements. The work must be visible from a public street or sidewalk. The following types of improvements are eligible for grants. Now, this isn't an exclusive list, this is just kind of given an idea of what some of those are, and that's part of that, what Riley was talking about, we'll kind of learn as the applications come in. Obviously, this, you know, this EDA would be the ones where, you know, you know, we would see that through the application, that staff would first kind of review, would bring that to the EDA for your comments. and whether to move forward with it or not. But I think we can learn from that. So this list isn't exhaustive. It's more or less just to kind of give kind of a flavor for it. It can be a restoration of exterior finishes and materials, masonry repairs and tuck pointing, exterior painting or reciting, removal of architecturally inappropriate and incompatible exterior finishes and materials, repair or replacement of windows and doors. Replacement must be architecturally appropriate. Contracted labor related to any of the above improvements include, including design work for improvements that are to be completed. Up to 25% of the total project cost is eligible. Other improvements similar in nature to the above. And then, grant funds may be used to pay for materials. And, you know, some projects may require prior approval from the Historic Preservation Commission.
Do we have a commission?
I'm not sure.
I don't think we have one anymore.
I don't think we have one.
So if it has a historical nature, how is that done in this city?
Excuse me, it was blended into, what did we blend that into?
We used to have a...
The planning commission kind of took it over generally.
Yeah, I think that was it.
Yeah, we used to have a design and historical review committee.
Maybe that says prior approval from the planning commission, not Historic Preservation Commission?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got a lot of architects, a lot of good knowledge on that one, so I think we'll take advantage of that.
Okay. That may be changed. The city of North St. Paul requires permits for most of the eligible improvements listed above. For questions about permits, please contact the Community Development Department. Information is there. What will the matching grant dollars not pay for? The following activities are not eligible for matching grants. Improvements already in progress or completed prior to contract approval. So in other words, we won't reimburse for work that's already been done. Improvements to a building interior, rear, or side not visible from a public street or sidewalk. Improvements to non-commercial buildings, roofing, HVAC systems, building mechanicals, or security systems. Fencing excludes, excludes decorative fencing as part of the landscaping improvement. Parking areas, billboards, roof signs or temporary signs, dynamic display or electronic message signs, conforming signs or outings other than to bring them into compliance with the zoning code. Purchase or rental of tools and equipment or for labor performed by the building or business owner, family members, employees, or any other person with a financial interest in the property or business. And any other improvements not deemed eligible.
About permit costs. Typically, I've seen programs like this where, if, you know, if the improvements require a building permit, then we would not allow these grant funds to pay for the permit cost itself. I've seen that in some facade improvement projects.
Thoughts?
I would, I would put the cost on the, on the owner's. So make that an exclusion.
Exclusion.
Ineligible expense.
That'd be, that'd be my...
I think that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
I agree. I would think that's something the city needs to...
Because in a sense, we're paying ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're paying, paying half of it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
That's separate.
We did have some pretty good discussion about signage as well before. I mean, there were some different opinions on that, not to muddy the waters, but...
Building signage.
You guys okay with the wording in here when it comes to the sign aspect of it?
Okay.
Signs on any one, that one you're talking about, for the non-compliant?
Yeah, I mean, clearly like billboards or roof signs, but, you know, some signs...
Window signage, you know, window clings, that type of stuff.
Yeah, there's some things that can dress up a building too, that make it look pretty nice, so... But I just want to, I know we had some conversation about it previously, and I didn't know if anybody else had any more input on that.
What kind of, what do you think in...
Well, you could look at it, you could look at it two ways. It could be a, a brand-new sign, or it could be replacement of an existing sign that may be dilapidated, looks bad, you know. I think those signs, you might want to be eligible to improve, because that's going to overall improve the look of the facade.
Well, I think the whole, I think the, the overall expectations of this program is to enhance the structural capability of the building. I don't understand, I totally agree that signs is going to help advertise, magnify the business. I think that's on the business owner. We're talking about the structural integrities of the buildings. Those are separate. Sign is not an instructional...
I think if you, I, I do agree with you. I think if you do open up to signs, you're going to get a lot of sign, sign requests probably.
Any other thoughts on signage? I'm kind of mulling that still.
As I've driven up and down, I'm, I kind of, oh, more in line with, depending on what the sign is. There's a couple of buildings downtown that cleaning up their, their marker on their front would make a huge difference. And if this is something that can tip them over to get it done, I would be supportive of it. If it's to hang a sign that doesn't exist, if it's to do those types of things, I think I would, I would question it, but...
So what I'm hearing is, is if you have a sign that's not really fitting in, or it's, it's deteriorated, we're going to want you to revamp the front of your building first before we put a new sign back on. You're putting lipstick on a pig. Right?
Yeah, I mean, I, can I say names? I have an example. Okay, I won't say it. So, but there's a, there's, there's a couple examples of where it would, it would benefit the downtown greatly by update, having, updating the sign, the existing sign, but to your point, do some additional work to the front of the building as well.
So as long as it's attached to the building, I was thinking, you know, it can't be window signs or stuff like that. If it's a permanent attachment to the building, maybe that would be.
We, at the liquor store, when we remodeled, the biggest, one of the big price, what do you call it? Obstacles for us was to put money into a new sign. And Oakdale actually had a sign program just for signs, because it was a great improvement. But signs are very expensive. And it really hinders a lot of people from upgrading their signs, because they just can't afford it.
And they're putting in half. We're only paying for half, so they're paying for half of their sign.
So were you, were you looking at more from an existing signs, not new signage, brand-new signage?
What I don't want to get into is if we have, if we have a business that the, we take off the sign, we still have a structural component of the front of the building that needs to be... I don't want a nice new sign going over the structural integrity that needs to be improved. That's not, that's not making any, that's not making any financial sense.
Yeah, my, my...
From our, from our seat on this money, it doesn't make any sense.
My concern is if you open it up to signs, I can, I can see a lot of applicants thinking, hey, I can get 50% of this new sign paid for? I'll do it, without doing any other improvements whatsoever.
Correct.
And I don't know if, I don't know if you want to go, I think that's your part of one of your concerns.
Exactly, that's where, that's...
They're only going to submit applications for a new sign.
Couldn't you tie the two together?
That's what I'm trying to think of.
Make the necessary improvements to the building, and then you're eligible for...
That's what I'm thinking. I think that would be smart.
What if they don't need any improvements to the building, and they just want to upgrade the sign?
Then I think that's a different, that's a different conversation, you know?
Is there something with code with the front? I mean, is it just making it look better, or it's not under compliance? It's probably under compliance, it's just doesn't look good, is what we're looking at.
We still have our sign ordinances, and I would assume that even when that new sign went up, they asked to see what you were going to do with it.
Yeah.
Wouldn't they?
We would still review it.
I mean, we would still review it, yeah.
If they're replacing a sign that's not really changing size, dimension, how it's, it, you can just, like, if you're just refacing a sign, you can do that. If you're changing anything, now it has to come into whatever the updated, whatever the current sign, signage code is. So if they're going to change their sign, that's where the real expense is, because it's essentially, essentially a whole new sign. I, I just, I don't know, I don't know how you tie those together. I don't know how you say, okay, we'll give you, I'm just using round numbers here, we're going to give you $10,000. And, but you have to spend $7,000 on building versus, I, I don't know how you write that into a, a policy, some sort of a program.
That's what I understand.
That's, that's difficult to...
Is it just painting? Is it stucco work? Is it, you know, there's so many variables.
At the end of the day, we still have the ability to accept or reject the request.
They would still have to get a sign permit, because that's a totally separate permit. So that has its own separate review by staff. I mean, the easiest is you just, no signs, right? That's clean and cut, that's the simplest. The problem is, I, I think what Tim was saying, I think you could benefit by having some businesses update their sign, because I think that's going to improve the look. But then, now you're getting into a situation where they can get a free, half-free, a half of a sign for free, and that's all you're going to get a lot of applicants for.
And they look at, yeah, we got...
That's, that's not the spirit of this, right?
They look at, they'll get a, you know, redoing the front, we still got our old sign, because we can't afford to replace it. Then you got the opposite, where you got new, but the new crappy old sign hanging there still, so...
Is it possible to do a couple phases where we focus on the building itself, see how popular the program is, and then take a look at sign?
I think you could probably do just a facade-only improvement plan project. See what the, see what the temperature is like. If it's really good, do a second, maybe in a year or two, let's do a sign one. Nothing's stopping us from doing that.
That's a great idea, Brandon.
Thanks.
And you can always, you can always amend this, to include that at a later date.
And I think Oakdale, that was a separate...
Yeah.
A separate deal, it was just for a sign.
Just for signage alone.
Just for signage.
I think that's a great idea.
All right. Time for that.
So it sounds like stick with only facade improvements this round.
Well, they know if they fix the building, hey, there's going to be, you know, something else come along. And then, you know, we're looking in phases, because we want to be able to work our way with people to help them. Does that sound good to everybody?
Not to throw another kink in it, but...
You've been full of kink so far. What side are you playing on?
That's right.
And they're re-tucking the, the front of their building, but they want to put a sign on it as well. I don't want to put different holes in it than what I need to if I'm going to do a different sign later.
Or they have to remove a bad sign to get the tuck work done.
Again, very many variables.
Well, it was a good idea that you spoke.
I know, I just got to throw it in.
Okay, Brandon, that was a bad idea.
You're off, let's go. Back your, back your mug. Once we agree, everybody stops talking, that's the new rule.
There's too many variables.
I get what you're saying, though, if you're going to redo the front, and you got to take it down to fix it.
Indeed.
I, I think it's a tough one, I'm in.
Can we put it that signs are at the discretion of, you know, put it in there as a second link, even as far as, I know that face you're making.
That's a good message.
Yeah. We don't, yeah, I don't know signing what they have on it, but yeah.
And I mean, for me, if it's, if the sign is in conjunction with the rest of the facade, I would include that as part of the project. If it's strictly sign, no.
No?
I just, where my, my head goes is the new construction that looks fantastic downtown, the structural integrity of the older buildings, you know, I just, I like that focus and getting that back up in where we need to be. Signs are important, don't get me wrong, but structural integrity, I think, is...
Yeah.
Is huge.
But I do like what, I'll use your proper name this time, Councilmember Cole, or Member Cole, or whatever it is on here, said it's part of the thing, it's not just signs only. If it's the facade and the sign needs to be done, then it can be included in it.
What if they have $50 worth of facade improvements and then...
Well, that means your building's in good shape.
Yeah.
Or they're just finding the cheapest thing to do.
Turn off your microphone, dude.
So one thing we do in the electric department when we offer rebates, there's items that don't fall nicely into a pigeonhole. So we call it a custom rebate. And then, we can assess that to see if they're still saving energy, we can still get you a rebate. Maybe do we have like a custom type deal to where if it comes to a sign or something out of the ordinary that you guys need to contemplate and make a decision on for something unique, you could do that, and it would still be available.
Probably would have saved a lot of conversation.
You said that first.
I mean, for me, at the end of the day, I would like the sign portion incorporated into a facade improvement. If it's a one-off, it's a one-off. I mean, part of this conversation was driven by a local business that did come and ask if the city had a facade program, and at the time, we had let it lapse or had elected not to do it. And if I'm not mistaken, I think that did include a sign. I know they've done some of the additional facade work already. But, so that's, that's my only reason for holding, holding through to, to doing something sign-related, if it has something to do with the front. But I also get the point, if you're going to replace the front door, do you, you know, for 50 bucks, do you get? So, I think everything's kind of a one-off when it, when it comes in, is kind of the deal. There's subjectivity involved in everything.
Yeah, I, you know, going down that road, I think if you, if you require the business or the, the property owner to show that other improvements other than just the sign are being done, then that would be eligible. And that's, that's easy for us to verify that, you know? Instead of trying to, to, you know, play discretion, that's, that can get really sticky quickly.
So in the section that says, what will the matching grant dollars pay for? Why don't we have something to the effect of signs, if they are an integral part of the improvement, will be considered? So we leave it kind of open, and it's, again, as we move in through the program, we're going to end up seeing that it has, there's a review process. And so that can be, we're not eliminating it, but we leave it open for, you know, for this type of discussion at a later, at a later date.
I like the opportunity of a gray area.
Yeah.
At least for discussion.
For the discussion piece to it.
Is staff making that determination, or is that going to want to be coming back in front of? That's on you guys.
We'll put some verbiage together for you.
It's on the mayor.
Sometimes it's supposed to put it, give it to the...
Colorblind mayor, let him decide.
That's why he makes the big mind.
Yeah. All right. Are we good with that?
I think so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
And then it's, uh...
You're right, Dan.
Pardon?
Whatever you write.
Whatever I write. I like this. And then, you know, how do I receive the grant? You meet the program requirements, there's step one. Step two, you contact the Community Development Department, you know, contact the community development staff to set up a meeting to discuss your project. Mr. Arkbuildings may require prior, prior approval from the Planning Commission. Step three, you submit the application and agreement. The agreement still needs to be written up. We'll need a little bit of a, an attorney assistance on that. So you submit the facade improvement matching grant application, and then there will be a participation agreement to the program administrator, including a written description, contract bids that meet the following guidelines. And then, it'll be review and select. The proposal review and grant selection will be conducted by community development staff and the Economic Development Authority, and will be evaluated through a competitive process. Selection will take into account the following: total value of project, current conditions of building, aesthetics of finished work, available funds for grant and preference given to projects proposing structural repairs. So that kind of gets where Joe was talking about. And then, a secured signed copy, step five, secure, secure a signed copy of the application and participation agreement. Before you begin, be sure to obtain all the necessary city permits for the project, or ensure your contractor pulled the necessary permits. Permanent taxes paid verification is required prior to grant disbursements. Step six, complete the project and submit the documentation. Of course, we're going to be asking for proof of payment to contractor in one of the following two forms, either lien waivers, cancel tax sign receipts, and so forth, so they can't... And then, attached, beginning on page 120, is just kind of an, you know, an application form to kind of get the whole... um, to kind of get the whole entire process, um, started. And again, we, we would need to work on the agreement component to it, um, and with the application and the agreement. Once those are approved and assigned, um, then the, uh, owner, um, can move forward with the improvement project. And at completion, they would submit all the necessary paperwork and get reimbursed, or for at least half of the cost, up to no more than twenty thousand dollars per project. Clear as mud. And again, this can be adjusted and amended as we're moving through, as time moves forward. Um, it's just kind of, I think, there's been a lot of discussion, let's, you know, try to get moving and move forward with something, and see how it works out. Um, and then it continues evaluation.
So one question, uh, so this is basically a downtown facade program. You know, so people, when they look at this, you know, maybe we should say downtown improvement program, so that business is over on the other side of town.
Goes a little bit further, and it also incorporates Margaret Street, yeah.
Which is part of the downtown corridor.
Yeah. So it's kind of defined, you know, for that. Yep, yeah.
As far as.
And again, that could be something that, as time moves on, can be modified, too.
Well, I was thinking, if we don't get a whole lot of response from downtown, there are some properties outside of the downtown area that could use some help.
Yeah, so, so the name of it is a facade improvement program, it isn't specifically for the downtown right now, the geographical area? Is that just kind of start it off? But, again, um, you may end up finding, you know, you could have ten applications, which, ten applications tomorrow, there's your two hundred thousand dollars that, uh, um, that could be, um, right away. Or may find out that there's nothing that's coming in, and so you may wanna expand that. And again, all that does is, is take your action to be able to do that.
Like phase one type of thing?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and again, this is a program that's, you know, that should be being evaluated and, and modified as we're going through. We're gonna learn things as we, as we move forward. To me, there's never a program that's set on day one that's absolutely perfect. Um, and we should be evaluating it and making sure that, you know, um, that it's meeting the criteria in which your, your vision, I mean, I, I think Joe, Joe said it with a lot of, a lot of passion, and what the intent of what this improvement should be, and then it was good discussion on that sign, but, you know, then it comes around that, you know, if it's an integral part of that, of that improvement, it, it should be considered, it, it shouldn't be. Um, you know, Brian, he creates more issues with that, with his, with his holes, you know, in the sign. But, but that's a true piece, and so I think we're gonna learn. And that's where, whether, you know, the conversation and, and Riley's, um, thought processes, do you, how quickly do you start that updating of that design manual, because we're gonna be learning things as we're moving forward, that could be very insightful and help lead how that design manual is going to be, because we want it to be something that's gonna stand for at least a decade.
Yeah. Can I, well, I do like the gray area, like they, like, uh, like Terry said, because if you say business facade, you know, phase two, maybe doing, we have two other, you know, business centers that, uh, are getting older, that could probably use some help, too, so it's not, why is everything happening downtown, what about the rest of us that aren't downtown? You know, be able to keep that a little more general, and hopefully work our way to other, other parts of the city, too, and be able to help them out as well.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep.
Good answer.
Can we talk a little bit about our a- action plan to get this out there? Um, so businesses know about it, because that seemed like, um, way before my time. But it seemed like when we had this program before, nobody utilized it. When I, because I, I don't think that they knew about it. Um, how can we, how can we make this second go-around a better, better experience for this, for these businesses?
One thing that's working real right now is, now we have a communications specialist on board here, and she has already done that on several occasions, walked the downtown, whether or not it's giving out information about, um, you know, events that are coming up, or just really being plugged in, going to the Business Association, making sure that people know about this stuff to get it out there, so I don't think at that time, we had that, um, so I think that will help get it out. Of course, it'll be on the regular, the website, uh, we can put it in the city newsletter. But I think we can hit it better than we did before.
Oh, I'd be more than happy to get out there and knock on some doors for you guys, and do the face-to-face, and let business owners know, this is coming in the pipeline, this is the process, this is what we need to do. Rather than just, uh, a marketing material, whether it's online or whatever, uh, at the end of the day, we are still very old school in North St. Paul. So I think knocking on the doors, shaking hands, and eye-to-eye contact will go a long way with this program. So Riley, the communications director, if they need help, please let me know.
Yep.
Any suggestion on, on, in the, on that line, is, is that there should be some sort of like pamphlet, or brochure, or whether it's a leaflet, or whatever, that, that's, that's made, that we can walk through and hand out, and, and you say kind of old school, I don't know, isn't that extraordinary? To actually show that you actually care, and you're walking through and making sure that they're informed, to show that, you know, the, the city is, you know, um, is working with them? So I, I, I think that that's just a very positive gesture, and I think we're, you know, as, uh, I'm, I know he's executive director, but I'm still calling him city, city manager, as, as city manager Frandl had said, uh, we have staff now that, um, has already been starting to do some of that stuff, and, and so I think we, we're in a better position. So it's just, let's get that agreement going, so we have everything set, let's make sure we get our website prepared, get it some sort of pamphlet together, and, and let's hit it.
One other question I thought, I'm just, I don't know if we covered it, and I didn't remember, but as far as, um, timeline? So if somebody doesn't start something and it drags on forever, is there any kind of timelines or anything like that we should think about?
I think first, we're talking about going out for the RFP, for the downtown design manual.
No, I was talking about for the facade, for the, for the people that we, we, um, give the money to.
Actually being started?
Yeah, we give the money.
Sit on it for.
Exactly, you can't start and then have it sit there, and, and that's what I was talking about, is, you know, they get the grant, and, you know, they get signed up for it, and they get started, and it's like, you know.
They'd have to get a permit, what they did to do the, the project.
Mm-hmm.
The one year, Chris? Six months?
So they would have.
The, the permit itself would have.
Would kind of be your timeline of when you gotta.
We do have a couple that are in, right now, in queue in, in this area that have redo their permits on a, quite a normal basis, and don't seem to get too far.
And I would sure, that they would want to update, or, uh, you know, fast-track that, since they're gonna pay for it, and we'll reimburse them.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's not upfront.
All right.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not upfront.
All right.
And to me, that, if you wanted to put a stipulation that, you know, uh, once approved, it needs to be done within a certain timeframe, whether it's just say, six months, uh, a year, or whatever, to me, that would be incorporated in within the agreement itself that they're gonna be executing.
I just wanna make sure that there's some kind of, we're not sitting out there, and they come back two years later and say, hey.
But then you also have to, you also have to be prepared that you're gonna have to have, have some sort of way that they can extend that.
Thank you.
Um, as far as when the program would start, since we're sitting on September tenth, um, there would be a lot of communication type of work, the agreement, everything to be set up. Um, easiest way to put the funding sources, just incorporate it into your budget that would go into effect January first, twenty twenty-five. But if you wanted it to be for that, that would, you know, I mean, we can always make that happen, too. But that allows ample time that there's, you know, and, and, you know, Riley will have a lot of work, um, with his staff to be prepared as applications come in, and.
I do like the idea of a marketing piece.
Yes, and you wanna make sure you're, yeah, you wanna make sure when you're, when you're kicking this off, that we're we're taking it serio-, we're taking it seriously, yeah.
Exactly, that's why I think January would be good, just because there's a lot of year-end stuff that happens around here, and a lot of craziness, and. Same, agree on that?
Sure.
Okay.
So we won't review any submissions until first? Is that what I'm under, I mean, we're, or we aren't gonna fund anything till first?
Correct, yeah. Right, yep, yep.
To your first question, though, is this body anticipating to review the submissions for approval, or is that on the staff's side?
It's almost Yoda down there.
I mean, that could delay things, you know, if this body only.
How often we meet?
Right.
Right.
I, if it's within the parameters of the policy that this body created, I don't see why this, it would need to be.
That's kind of how I view it.
Yeah.
What, what we're talking about is the.
Set it up, yeah.
We can't babysit everything. That don't make all that.
No, I.
Whatever's the easiest for the person applying.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think you would wanna have final approval coming from the EDA on the application and thing, but I think it should be staff doing the reviewing and recommendations. They may give you a report, too, in your time of how many applicants you came in, this is the only one that we're bringing forward, um, or whatever the case may be.
This meets all the criteria, this is ready to go.
Yep, we're ready to go, here it is, everything's good, but let staff do all the review and, and merit of the project itself, um, because they can work with, you know, the, the business owner, if they need to tweak their program before it's asked for a final approval.
There's anything else that needs to go with the planning commission, because maybe there's some zoning type of thing, I mean, you don't know what's exactly.
Yeah, and they would have all that wrapped up in a bow before it comes in front of.
I like that. All right.
Pardon?
You're good?
I, I'm good, I think this is very exciting, it's nice to see it moving forward. And I thank you all for, uh, the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight, so.
Appreciate it, Dan.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to go now, and, uh, I, I'm gonna, my, uh, oldest grandson is, uh, in Cub Scouts, and tonight will be the first Cub Scout. So last night, we built a rocket, and tonight, we're shooting it off.
Nice.
Nice.
So, I have super glue all over my fingers to prove it, but.
Oh, sticky fingers is what you're telling us.
Sticky fingers, well, you.
Let's check his pockets on the way out.
I think, I thank you very much. This is good, good to see you get off the ground and move forward.
I appreciate it, appreciate all the work.
If you're playing with rockets, you're gonna be all sick tomorrow.
Wear goggles.
All right, next up is staff updates, you wanna tag-team this one here? Mr. Graham?
Sure.
So Article Seven, uh, just give you a quick update, they're moving along very well on that. Um, fourth floor is getting close to being even done, I mean, they're getting appliances in, uh, final touches on it. They're still looking at that December first date for, uh, opening. I think you had some meetings, won't you?
Yeah, we, um, you talked about the meeting that, this afternoon?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had, um, see, Met Council, Ramsey County, Hennepin County, and Deed all, um, do a, uh, an update for, uh, a Brownfield grant program that they have going on, um, and we had a, a pretty good attendance from local other communities, they had one in, uh, Golden Valley two or three weeks ago, and they wanted to hit something over here on the east side, and so they, uh, were just here, I was, I was just there this afternoon, uh, and then they walked over and did a, a tour of Article Seven, because that used, um, some of that grant funding, so. Kind of a success story that they wanted to show what could be done with those grants.
Nice, good deal.
That was very hopeful.
I'll take Delaware.
I think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, um, so we got shovels on the ground, started actually yesterday, uh, they came in and paid for their, uh, building permit, and, um, so, yeah, that's, that's moving along. I, I popped out there over my lunch break just to check it out, and they've got backhoes and excavators all going. Uh, the first two units are gonna be, um, if you can envision a map here, uh, along Seventeenth, it's the Ninth and Tenth Units, which is the far eastern two units, um, so.
Closest to that house, that house on Seventeenth.
Yes, so those, those are the ones, they're gonna start there and build those as sort of a demo, uh, show home. Um, and then, uh, over the, over the winter, continue to build out the rest, uh, hopefully be done by spring, so. Um, so that's moving along great, um, Margaret Street Commons, I'll jump into that then. Uh, so we did have, uh, a planning commission meeting, uh, was that last week? Yeah, that was last week. Uh, the, the planning commission, uh, reviewed a, um, a draft RFP put together by staff, um, had a couple minor edits, but that is looking good. We're gonna be sending that to the city council at their meeting on the Seventeenth for approval, so, um, you'll see that. Um, kind of long-term time, timeframe for that, we'll, we'll get it out, assuming it's approved by council, we'll get it out here mid-September. Um, submissions, uh, for proposals will be due, uh, by the first of the year. Again, you know, second, last quarter of the year is kind of, has a lot of, um, holidays, a lot of time off, so I, I wanna make sure that we give our developers a plenty of time to put together, because it's, it's an extensive, uh, thing to respond to an RFP for a development project, so. Um, and then, once, um, once we're past that, we'll, uh, sit down and review them and, and pick a couple, we'll work with the planning commission on that, before we finally go to the planning, or to the city council with a couple selected, um, options, and, and let the city council look at that and decide.
That's exciting stuff.
It is.
Thank you.
Taco Bell is also one of those programs that have a very quick up with the building, um, they're up and going, we've got, uh, power over there, got the transformer set. Um, they're getting close, I don't, I haven't heard an open date, have you, on that?
It's very close, though.
Yeah, they're moving along really well. One issue that we kind of saw with it, the neighboring property has kind of let that grow up pretty high. I mean, some of the trees are probably twenty feet tall, I mean, you can't even see that back there, so we have reached out to them. We did get a response from them as of, uh, today, that they are gonna be hiring their own, uh, contractor to go out there and get that mowed down, cut down. Um, they gave us a one to two week timeframe for doing that.
Property to the north and the property to the south?
That's true, too.
It's to the north.
This one's to the north, but the south, yeah, has issues as well. Uh, Pine Tree Center, um, they've had some issues over the time, people, some people were doing some dumping out there, they got them cleaned up. You know, they sold the pizza factory, it's now Buddy's Place, uh, I know that they had given him at least a six-month extension, probably till the first of the year, it sounds like, before they may be moving on. At that point, uh, our contact's been with the owner's son, he's said that, uh, they have the possibility of maybe demoing that, and then putting it up for sale. Uh, they've been back and forth with different ideas, they've even talked about developing themselves, but, uh, so we'll see how that pans out. It's getting pretty rundown, I didn't know if you'd heard anything different, knowing, no? Okay, yeah.
Oh, you, oh, that's when who you was down here? Okay.
Well, it sounds like they might be moving over to Lake Elmo, um, but, yeah, nothing new yet.
That would be a good place, Peter, for you to build your worldwide headquarters.
Yeah.
Right on that spot, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, maybe we'll, we'll, we'll build there.
There you go.
Yeah, last one, there's that EDA consultant, um, I had reached out a couple times with, uh, Baker Tilly, I have not heard anything back, so, uh, we'll have to go down a different route, uh, so more information to come next time.
So on the consultant piece, I reached out to the league, um, didn't get a lot of direction, because the league, Minnesota Cities, doesn't provide recommendations. Um, but they did encourage, um, two things for us to do, one, go out on their website and utilize their marketplace, which is someplace else we can, you know, we can drop RFPs, if we don't already do it today. Um, and they just said, pose the question out there, because there are companies out there that utilize that, um, as a, for lack of a better word, a lead source, so they can come back and talk to us. The other piece that was out there is, is there's a, kind of a bulletin board for city managers. Um, if you haven't dropped that out there yet, that goes to all city managers in the state as well, to see if anybody came back with recommendations.
We get it every day, yep. It's a good source.
Thanks for the update.
Absolutely. Turn it over to you for EDA member updates.
Okay. Peter? I can never say your last name right, so, Peter?
Nailed it. I don't have any updates.
Okay. Member Furlong? Lot of bears out there, I'm glad you made it back, in one piece. And then you're in.
No updates.
Okay.
For me.
What do you, sir?
No updates, I'm pretty excited about this facade program, though. I think this is a, this is a really neat thing for our community.
I agree. Um, today, Councilmember Cole and I were at the ribbon cutting for Old National Bank, so that was a, was a nice, a beautiful remodel inside there. They gave a check for a thousand dollars to the North St. Paul Food Show. So that was, it was a nice, beautiful remodel inside there. They gave a check for a thousand dollars to the North St. Paul food shelf. So I thought, that was very nice of them as a community. I did not realize the heritage of that bank. They said they'd been in North St. Paul for a hundred and fourteen years. Has different names, but that's, it's been in North St. Paul for that long, so that's quite a nice little heritage.
I actually have a savings book for my dad, nineteen thirty-seven or whatever. They actually go in there, and they would write in the balance.
Oh, really?
You know, they'd write, they'd subtract, and then they'd sign it, and that's how much was in there.
So that was, that was your, you're in there, cool. So, yeah, it was a very, it was a great, a great lesson.
Has it been same location?
Sorry?
Same location?
Nope. In fact, they said it was the old K and J. At one time, it was there. I don't know if there was one before that, but K and J, and then they built, they weren't sure, they put the new drive-through on in eighty-six, but they weren't sure when that building up there was built. We had a nice conversation, a lot of, a lot of people showed up, and it was, it was a good group, so that was exciting. Anything else that I can...
I mean, we, we covered off on everything of mine. My, my question about North and South is you and I had a conversation along McKnight. The properties to the south, I don't know if that's, that easement land is owned by the county, or if that's owned by the businesses, but with Taco Bell coming in there, there's no visibility from Highway Thirty-six, that there's, that there's anything there either, and I don't know who that falls on, but that might be something we can, to take a look at. But, and then the other piece is the, the lot to the west of the Credit Union, which is owned by the, yeah, so that could, that's got some pretty tall stuff growing in there, too. Just to kind of clean up that areas, we've got some newness in there. Would like, you know, it'd be nice to make sure that we move forward with, you know, the best foot forward that we can for the newness that's going in. The only other thing, oh, should somebody reach out to Buddy's and see if there's any way we can, as we did with Cal, to see if there's any way we can find property for him in the city before he moves out? I've been in there, the food's still as good as it was before. Still have the little chips and the, so...
I know we tried when Cal was still in there.
Yeah, so, I don't know. I mean, I've seen on social media, it sounds like they've got a commitment to Lake Elmo, but, you know... Is it, is it worth one last shot, knowing that we've got, you know, some, some open facility, you know, here in, here in the city, whether it be downtown or, you know, some of the other strip centers? And the only other thing is, my tenure with EDAs coming to an end at the end of the year, I chose not to re-up. So as my official duty as council representative will go away, I still have a desire to stay here come January first. So I do know that there is currently one opening, if not two, on the EDA. Mayor assigns who gets to, based on, based on city rules, gets to assign, but I would like to throw my hat in the ring. I've got three and a half years on here, and I still have a lot of passion for the city and a lot of passion for the development, so just wanted to air that out as well.
Thank you very much. Sounds good. If nothing else, we'll call for adjournment at five eleven.
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Cole, second. Councilmember Matthews, or Councilmember, sorry. Vice President Matthews? I know, it's just, stay with me, man, it just keeps going, it doesn't really matter. All those in favor, say aye? Aye, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Our next meeting, we didn't really talk about that, did we?
October eighth?
October eighth, okay.